Recording in progress.
All right, welcome everybody. It's six o'clock, September 3rd. Let's call the Washoe County Planning Commissioner Meeting to order. Can we get a determination or quorum, please?
Jim Barnes?
Here.
Michael Flick?
Here.
Linda Kennedy?
Here.
Dan Lazareski?
Present.
Kate Nelson?
Here.
Amy Owens?
Present.
Rob Pierce?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have the Ethics Law announcement and instructions for providing public comment via Zoom telephone?
Certainly. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you've received a gift or loan. Number two, you have a pecuniary interest. Number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship. Or number four, if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here tonight, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please remember that you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. I'm also going to go ahead and read the instructions for Zoom. This meeting is held in the County Commission chambers and it's also being held today via Zoom. To attend the meeting via Zoom, please log into the Zoom webinar using the link found on the agenda. You can also join the meeting by typing zoom.us into your computer, clicking "Join a Meeting" on the Zoom website, and entering meeting ID 842-7265-9406. You can also join the meeting via telephone only by dialing 1-669-900-9128 and enter meeting ID 842-7265-9406 and press pound. For those of you wishing to provide public comment via Zoom tonight, log into the Zoom webinar and the link on the agenda and utilize the "Raise Hand" feature during any public comment period. To provide public comment via telephone only, you can press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to mute or unmute. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the appeal procedure, please, Mr. Lloyd?
Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-3610 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open up general public comment. Just like to remind everybody that there will be a public comment period right before each agenda item is is gone through. So if there is any general public comment, I would like to allow you to speak at this time.
I have one person in chambers for a public comment. Joanie Hammond, if you could please come to this podium and state your first and last name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Joanie Hammond. I'm against development code amendment case number WDCA-0004. I think that's agenda item. Later in the agenda. I oppose the adding of middle housing types, minor accessory dwelling units, guest quarters, multifamily, minor, and employee housing. I'm also against duplexes and multifamily housing within regulatory zones within the types that are already allowed. If you approve this, it will add to traffic and congestion, noise, and increase crime. I spoke with the Sheriff's Department several times and they agreed that this kind of change with unit dwellings, apartments, et cetera, all add to traffic congestion and crime. Please vote no on item D.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else wishing to make general public comment? No further comment in chambers and no hands raised via Zoom.
Okay, then we'll close general public comment and move on. Item number six, approval of the the meeting agenda for tonight. We have no changes at this time. Can I get a motion to accept as written?
I move that we accept the agenda as written.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next item is item seven, approval of the August 6 draft minutes. Everybody get a chance to look at that. Do we have any changes or can I get a motion to accept as written?
I move that we accept the minutes as written for July. I'm sorry, for August 6.
And you're Linda, right?
Yes. For Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Lazareski, a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, moves us on to the public hearings. First item on the agenda is the abandonment case number WAB24-0007 for Nugent. Mr. Lloyd, will you please announce that?
For hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in the offer of dedication for 104.65 square feet of the valet way access easement for the purpose of constructing a garage addition. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner Katie Stark.
All right, Katie, floor chairs.
Thank you. Good evening, Katie Stark, Washoe County Planning. The case before you is abandonment case WAB24-0007 for Nugent. The applicant's request is for an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in the offer of dedication for 104.65 square feet of the valet way access easement in order to construct a garage addition. The property is a .052 acre parcel in Incline Village in the Tahoe Planning area. Couple of site plan images from various directions. The blue area is the proposed abandonment. There's a little delay on this. The applicant originally submitted a boundary line adjustment application to request an alteration to the existing property line. However, abandonment of the valet way access easement must be approved and that abandonment would need to be recorded before a boundary line adjustment could be considered. The property is located in Tyrolean Village, which is a multi-unit complex. A large portion of that complex is common space managed by the Tyrolean Village Association. Each dwelling has its own parcel number and essentially the dwelling is the parcel, the parcel's the dwelling, the dwelling fits exactly in those property lines. Couple of images of Tyrolean Village. You can see the, off to the left, the larger map showing the whole of Tyrolean Village, and then the close-up to the right. The applicant's parcel is in red. You can see the valet way running through the middle of that common space and then the additional parcels running along either side. There is a map from 1968 for Tyrolean Village Unit 2, which shows this common space and valet way. A note on the map states that dedication of all streets to the county of Washoe is rejected, but the offer of dedication will remain open under NRS 278.390. So valet way was recorded as an access easement and that offer of dedication to Washoe County remains open. Because of that, any request to extend into valet way requires Washoe County to abandon its interest in that offer of dedication. Here's the image we were just discussing, that map from 68. You can see valet way running through the middle, the parcels along either side, and the common space. So the applicant would like to extend 104.65 square feet into an unimproved portion of valet way, so that's an area that's not paved, it's dirt. Washoe County Code Section 110.618.20D states that a boundary line adjustment application shall not be approved if there's an encroachment into any public easement right-of-way or required yard. Again, because of this code, the applicant is requesting the abandonment of our interest in the offer of dedication for that piece of the property that they would like to extend into. Here's a helpful image. You can see the blue again is the proposed abandonment. The yellow shows the edge of the paved portion of valet way. The red is the right-of-way and that space in between the yellow and red is the the unimproved dirt area. You can also see their proposed, again, the boundary line adjustment's not being considered tonight, but you can see the long and short dash lines show the proposed boundary line change, solid line within that, the proposed addition, and then you can see the portion that goes into valet way. Application was sent to multiple agencies for review. Conditions provided by those agencies are included in Exhibit A. There were a couple of responses that carried a fair amount of significance. One was from AT&amp;T. There are telecommunications facilities within the proposed garage footprint as well as a telecommunications terminal within that footprint. Those facilities serve both the applicant's property and other addresses along valet way. A couple of conditions are included to address that concern. The first, 1E, is a condition from planning requiring documentation from AT&amp;T that those items have been relocated to to their approval or documentation showing that an agreement's been reached between AT&amp;T and the applicant. In addition, there's a condition 3A from AT&amp;T themselves that the cost of the relocation is the responsibility of the owner. The applicant has indicated that they're already in communication with AT&amp;T about these requirements. North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District had multiple concerns as well. The first was regarding roadway widths and potential removal of road leading up to the area in order to gain TRPA coverage. The applicant, again, saw the fire conditions prior to the meeting and has communicated with North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District. We received confirmation from FIRE that the roadway was indeed reduced in width, but it still meets their requirements for fire truck apparatus. Additional concerns from North Lake Tahoe Fire included maneuvering and turnaround, existing parking arrangements. The applicant, again, followed up with North Lake Tahoe Fire and we received confirmation that North Lake Tahoe Fire does not have an issue with the proposed abandonment. There are conditions provided by Washoe County Engineering and conditions provided by North Lake Tahoe Fire to ensure that all of FIRE's concerns are addressed. I wanted to briefly bump back to this picture to discuss the parking concern. Staff actually feels that this could assist with the parking concerns in the area. The paved area, again, the edge is in yellow, will now, in essence, be extended for these property owners. They will have set aside parking spaces for them that are not within that paved area of valet way. In addition, you can see they're paving a portion of driveway, which would provide more off-road, off-street access, so to speak, for parking. Abandements need to be noticed. All abutting and connected property owners, 13 property owners along valet way, as shown in the image, were noticed. Staff did not receive any responses from those property owners. In addition, the Tyrolean Village HOA was noticed. I did not receive a response from them. Staff can make the required findings and staff is recommending approval with the conditions including in Exhibit A. It's a possible motion for your consideration. I am available for questions. The applicant has indicated that they'll be available via Zoom. Possibly make a few comments and they're available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation or some comments at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
Philip, go ahead and unmute.
Yep. This is Chair and Commissioners, I appreciate your time. I hope that you can hear me now.
We can.
This is Phil Gillenford, the architect, and also the client's rep. Appreciate Katie and the staff, also along with the engineering department assisting us through this process because a number of other projects over the years were done without the process of an abandonment, and I think this is probably better that we're going through this process. I don't know that there's really going to be a point where Washoe County will ever dedicate those roads in Tyrolean Village because it's been a private community for close to 50 years. And I think that that is part of the common area and it would be an extremely expensive undertaking to bring those roads and all the utilities into compliance with Washoe County Engineering in order to do those abandements. However, we wanted to make sure that we followed the process and once we were aware that we needed to go through the abandonment of the roadway common area so that we would not affect the potential interests of the future of Washoe County. So we looked at that and we reviewed that with the HOA, which I was surprised because I thought the HOA president had said that he had sent over a letter of support to the county with regards to that, but we do have a letter of support from the HOA for the project. This does enable the property owner to have on basically what we would call onsite parking, which would be then the garages, which would then eliminate the need to be parking in valet, which is where most of the homeowners currently park with, because most of them don't have a garage. We have met with AT&amp;T onsite. The encroachment and the work that needs to be done is pretty minor, but it does take some extra effort by the homeowner and they're willing to participate and get that taken care of with AT&amp;T, so it doesn't affect the other neighbors there. There's only really a very, and I don't know that it's necessary, but if you have questions, of going back to the exhibit number 10 that Katie put up, you can see just a little key triangle of the actual structure that sits into the abandonment. Most of the work that happens in the abandonment area is really driveway and access point to get to the garage and not necessarily structure that is going to interfere necessarily with particular turnaround. So we would appreciate your support of this abandonment. It's kind of a unique one, but we appreciate the staff report and we're accepting all conditions that were part of that staff report. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them if I can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to open up public comment on this matter. Do we have any public comment on this matter?
I have no public comment in chambers. I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board for discussion. Do we have any discussion or questions for the applicant or for the planner? Go ahead.
Commissioner Lazareski, a question for the applicant's rep. I see there's a transformer relocation, public hearing. The Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB24-0007 for the Chris and Ally Nugent Family Trust with the conditions included as Exhibit A for this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110.806.20.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Nelson, a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Brings us on to 8B, which is a special use permit case number WSUP23-0038 Dodge Flat Solar. Do we have any disclosures on this?
Commissioner Lazareski, I have a disclosure. In my private employment, I am the construction project manager for the NV Energy substation work that will interconnect this project. I, since April, have had monthly calls with the applicant concerning the interconnection scope of the project, but not concerning any of the Washoe County permitting. Should this project continue through its lifespan, I can reasonably foresee that I'll continue in this interconnection scope of work in the substation, but this is one of a lot of interconnection scope of works that I have. These projects suspend, unsuspend, withdraw, enter the queue all the time, and we do a lot of them. And so I don't see any personal work benefit or detriment depending on the outcome of this application. I don't think that a reasonable person in my place would be material affected in voting on this item, and I don't believe I need to recuse.
Okay. Thank you for that disclosure.
Okay. Mr. Lloyd, would you please announce?
Yeah, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve a special use permit for, one, the establishment of a 200-megawatt photovoltaic generation facility and a 200-megawatt battery energy storage system, which is an energy production renewable use type. Two, the construction of a 345-kV substation and a one-mile 345-kV gen tie line connecting the proposed substation to the Ollinghouse Substation, which is a utility service use. Three, major grading for 1,178 acres of ground disturbance, which includes 21,186 cubic yards of cut and 1,200, I'm sorry, 125,634 cubic yards of fill. Four, a request to vary all parking design requirements. Five, a request to vary landscaping design requirements. And six, a request to vary the maximum height of 35 feet to allow for structures of 120 feet in height. This project meets the standards for a project of regional significance because it will generate more than five megawatts of electricity, require construction of a substation, and require construction of a transmission line that carries 64, I'm sorry, 60 KV or more. It will require approval by the regional planning authorities before any approval at the county level would take effect. This project also requires a recommendation to amend the regional utility corridor map from the Board of County Commissioners to identify the location of the new substation and transmission line. This project will also need to comply with all federal and state approvals before any approval at the county level would take effect. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner Tim Evans.
Tim, floor chairs.
Thank you. Tim Evans, Planner. So the case before you today is special use permit, case number WSUP23-0036 for Dodge Flat Solar II. So on the screen there, you can see this project is comprised of multiple parcels. A total of 16 parcels encompass this project. So with those 16 parcels, there will be 1,571 acres approximately that will be covered with this project. And the surrounding parcels are either vacant or similarly developed with photovoltaic solar arrays. And this property is located within the Truckee Canyon Planning Area, and all the parcels are zoned general rural. So the request before you is for a 200-megawatt photovoltaic solar generation facility and a 200-megawatt battery storage energy system, as well as a 345-kilovolt substation and a one-mile-long 345-kilovolt gen tie line. In addition, there is also, as part of this special use permit, a request for major grading for up to 1,178 acres of ground disturbance, which includes 21,186 cubic yards of cut and just over 125,000 cubic yards of fill. And this special use permit also is requesting to vary parking standards, landscaping standards, and height requirements as well. So on the screen there, this is a site plan that was submitted with the special use permit application, and you can see the parcels have, the ones that are involved with this project, have the red crosshatch and the black crosshatch. So as mentioned earlier, this project is for a 200-megawatt generation, solar generation facility, photovoltaic generation facility. To the right on the screen there, you can see that's just an example of potentially what these solar panel array solar panel arrays would look like. So they'll be mounted on, they're just panels mounted on piles, so due to the being mounted on piles or similarly poles, there's minimal site disturbance. And as mentioned earlier, it also includes a 200-megawatt storage facility, which includes which I'll go into a little bit more in a couple more slides, the number of batteries for the solar facility's storage of all the energy. And so as far as that 200-megawatt generation facility and all the panels, there's approximately 427,383 photovoltaic modules that will be proposed as part of this project with a max height of approximately 14 feet. And so as far as the battery electric storage system, it will be encompassed with 302 battery enclosures approximately in the substation area. So you can see there towards the bottom of the screen, there's a call out for the proposed substation, and then to the right of that area with the crosshatch is the battery energy storage system, and that's where all these battery enclosures will be located. And the battery enclosures themselves are very similar in appearance to cargo containers. So staff has recommended a condition in Exhibit A to ensure compliance with Washoe County's code requirements for cargo containers. So as mentioned earlier, the height requirement of 35 feet for the general rural zoning is being requested to be varied up to a maximum height of 120 feet, and the 120-foot height limit is being increased. That way that the gen tie line structures that carry the line itself from one substation to the connecting substation will be around that 120-foot mark. And so as mentioned earlier, this, the substation will be 345 kilovolts, as well as that one-mile-long gen tie line will also be 140, or 345 kilovolts, and this project must be sponsored by the Board of County Commissioners, and it will go to regional for utility site and corridor map amendments. So as mentioned earlier, as part of this special use permit, there is grading, a total of approximately, well, up to 1,178 acres of disturbance and 21,000, over 21,000 cubic yards of cut and 125,000 cubic yards of fill. There will be minimal disturbance from the solar panels due to them being mounted on piles, and the primary disturbance for this project will come from actual access roads and creating the substation area. So this project was sent to engineering for review, Washoe County Engineering, and a condition of approval is being recommended by Washoe County Engineering, which is in Exhibit A of the staff report, in relation to requiring a grading and drainage plan. And looking at everything in its entirety for the grading for this project, all the proposed grading complies with Article 438 of Washoe County Code. So as far as parking and loading goes, the application stated that there will be a maximum of 2 So as far as parking and loading goes, the application stated that there will be a maximum of two employees on site at any given time. And per Washoe County Code, for this type of use, there must be one space available for each employee working at one time. Therefore, two spaces are being proposed in this submittal for this special use permit. And the applicant is requesting, excuse me, to vary the paving standards for this project. And specifically, it is due to this area being rural without paved roads. And staff is supportive of varying that, that code standard as it just doesn't necessarily make sense to require paving in that area since that area doesn't have that in that rural environment. So as far as landscaping goes, the proposed use for energy production renewable use type is considered an industrial use. And per Washoe County Code, the use is exempt from landscaping requirements with the exception of parking and loading. So therefore, the applicant has requested to have specific parking standards waived, specifically Washoe County Code Sections one ten, four twelve point five zero, point four five, and point four zero, all of which are in relation to industrial and civic uses and the parking and loading areas. And the staff is supportive of the request to waive these standards as this area is very rural, and there is no landscaping whatsoever and no water that could be provided to sustain landscaping. So it doesn't make sense to have landscaping required for this project. So as far as wildlife goes and biological resources, the proposed project is within potential habitat for mule deer, pronghorn, antelope, the greater sage grose, and raptors. So that being said, a biological evaluation was submitted with the project's middle, and it included mitigations, which are being recommended as conditions of approval in Exhibit A to address any potential impacts to habitat in these, for these animals. And additionally, in speaking with Endow, they have recommended a condition for, or they provided comment in relation to requiring a condition for a wildlife protection plan. So that will be another layer on top of the mitigations and the recommended conditions that staff has recommended in Exhibit A for wildlife. And so as far as cultural resources go, this project was sent to local tribes for review and the State Historic Preservation Office, and no comments were received in relation to the project. And staff is recommending a condition, which is just a standard condition to have in relation to cultural resources and their potential discovery, and just having that as a note on any plans that are submitted during, for a building permit. So the project application was sent to 21 agencies for review, and seven of those agencies provided conditions which are included in Exhibit A of the staff report. And 131 parcels were noticed for this project, and two public comments were received as a result of the noticing. The first public comment, and both comments are within the staff report, have been included with it. The first comment was in relation to, there was a neighboring, or a gentleman that contacted me in relation to mining claims that he had on one of the parcels. So in relation to that, I reached out to the applicant, and the applicant was able to get everything worked out such that it did not impact, or the proposed project did not impact his mining claims. And then the second comment was in relation to just a general inquiry of wanting to know what the project was about. So staff is able to make all five required findings as detailed on pages 21 and 22 of the staff report. And additionally, on page 22 of the staff report is also three additional findings that are required by Article 10 in Washoe County Code. Excuse me, Article eight, 10. So staff recommends the Planning Commission approve special use permit number, case number W S U P twenty-three dash zero zero three six, and provides the motion on the screen. One thing to note is that the motion has been amended slightly, and that amendment has been sent to all the commissioners for, for review. And it is on the screen as well. And the portion that has been changed, or actually just added, is the last phrase there at the very end of that motion, which is, "And the parking and loading landscape standards of Washoe County Code Section one ten point four twelve point five zero." And I'm available for any questions, and the applicant has a presentation as well.
Thank you, Washoe County Planning Commission, for having me here. My name is Stuart Baird. I'm the project manager for this project and work with NextErg Energy Resources. Today, I'd like to discuss Dodge Flat Solar Two. First off, I'd like to just explain a little bit about NextErg Energy Resources. We're an American-owned and operated company, and as you can look on the image on the right-hand side, we have investments all across North America, including 40 U.S. states and Canada itself. We're the world's leading generator of renewable energy from the wind and sun, also a world leader in battery energy storage. NextErg Energy Resources has a great history here with their investment in Nevada. Going back a decade to 2014, NextErg Energy Resources has invested $2.3 billion of total capital within the state of Nevada. The image on the right-hand side shows where some of that investment is located, mostly focused around the Reno area as well as Las Vegas. Currently, we have five solar energy centers in operation and two battery storage facilities. We also have six solar energy centers and eight battery storage projects that are being in development right now. We also have contributed $5.4 million in property taxes to Nevada communities in 2023. Of that $5.4 million, $1.7 million has been contributed to the Washoe County in 2023. As of date for 2024, we are also around $1.7 million. We've also contributed $1.9 million in annual payroll, as well as $1.6 million in annual land payments. One thing that really sets NextErg Energy Resources apart from other companies is a lot of companies will come in, develop, and then they leave. But with NextErg Energy Resources, we have a different philosophy. We want to be a part of the community. We develop a project. Many of our projects will go from 25 to 30 years, and because of that, we want to be invested in the community. We are a member of the Reno and Sparks Chamber of Commerce, as well as we sponsor the Reno Rodeo. Want to give you a little bit of history about the development in Washoe County with NextErg Energy Resources. The first one is Dodge Flat Solar One. And if you look on the image on the right-hand side, you'll see kind of a diagonal. That is where the project was built. Those are the solar panels. And the northwestern parcel, that's where the Olinghouse, NV Energy Olinghouse substation is located. Dodge Flat Solar One reached commercial operation in 2022, and we have a local maintenance team that is there on site every day. Thanks to that local maintenance team and the great development from NextErg Energy Resources, the operations have run smoothly over the last two years. Around a similar timeframe was the development of Fish Springs Ranch Solar. This project also reached commercial operation in 2022, and it utilizes the same maintenance team. They're able to cover both projects as Fish Springs Ranch Solar is just a little bit farther north, closer to Pyramid Lake. And that project has also run smoothly for the last two years. Two projects that are also in development that I just wanted to make the council aware of is Dodge Flat Energy Storage One. This is a 100-megawatt storage project. We filed the pre-development application at the beginning of the month on the first, and we plan on attending the September 11th pre-development meeting. That project will also be located adjacent to the Dodge Flat Solar One project that you're seeing right here on, on the screen, on the image. And it has an expected commercial operation date of December 2026. Another project for development is the Truckee Energy Storage, and this is a 500-megawatt energy battery storage project. And it is also proposed to be adjacent to the Dodge Flat Solar Facility. The Truckee Energy Storage project is relatively new and early on in the process, and currently, we're working with the landowner who is interested in selling. Now, to focus a little bit more on Dodge Flat Solar Two. Brief background, it's a 200-megawatt solar and 200-megawatt battery storage project. It's located approximately three miles northwest of Wadsworth, Nevada, adjacent to the existing Dodge Flat Solar Site. Similar to the image that was on the previous screen, you can see on that diagonal is the existing Dodge Flat Solar One project. And then, as was mentioned previously, those shaded black and red areas is the proposed site area for Dodge Flat Solar Two. The project is expected to begin construction in Q4 of 2025 with an expected beginning of operation in June of 2027. The B L M, we've worked closely with them over the last few years during the development process. The B L M is excited about this project, and they're expected to complete their NIPA process in Q3 of 2025. One thing that went into the site considerations for this project is it's an optimal site for two reasons. One, it's located adjacent to the Dodge Flat Solar One facility. And two, it's a next-door neighbor to the NV Energy Olinghouse Substation. This means that we can run a very short transmission line or Gen Ti line to the NV Energy Substation. The development team at NextErg Energy Resources has carefully designed the site to minimize any environmental impacts. Wanted to give you a brief history about the special use permit. The special use permit, we first kicked off with a neighborhood meeting in May 25th of last year. We then originally filed the S U P in November 8th of this last year. As was mentioned earlier, there were some delays that caused us to refile in July of this year, on July 7th, or July 8th. The main delay, as was mentioned earlier, is a mining claim delay. And essentially, what happened with the mining claim delay is shortly after we made our original filing, we found out from the planning committee that there was that mining claim overlap. And because of that, we diligently reached out to determine where those mining claim holdings were within the property. And then we were able to reach out to the claim holder. After discussion with the claim holder, it was determined that it would be best for the project to move forward if we removed that westernmost B L M parcel that had the mining claims on it. Following this, we then needed to finalize our layout. Because once we took the panels that were supposed to be allocated on that parcel, and we had to redistribute it to the rest of our project site, it made our project site very compact. And our E N C team worked diligently, along with our consultants, to optimize our layout. As well as, we wanted to give you guys a very accurate cut and fill and grading estimate. We know that Washoe County requires a plus or minus 10% accuracy on their cut and fill, and we did our due diligence on getting that. Overall, the project capacity and private lands are consistent with what was presented at the neighborhood meeting. I wanted to highlight three benefits of the project. First is grid resiliency. Solar panel and battery storage are fantastic for the peak moments of the day. Every day, the sun comes up, and the solar panels are able to absorb that energy. But the great thing about having a co-located battery storage along with the solar is when the sun goes down, we can't generate solar energy anymore. But when people get home off of work, they, they come home, you know, put on a football game, start watching TV, start cooking, and turn on all the lights, and usage goes up. And with that, we're able to then have the energy that's been stored in that battery storage unit, and we can then discharge that into the grid. Dodge Flat Solar Two is estimated to power up to 200,000 homes. The second benefit I would like to discuss with you guys today is the, is the local jobs that this will bring to Washoe County. Dodge Flat Solar Two will provide over 200 construction jobs for local qualified talent. This will be a great boost to the Washoe County, as well as it will provide full-time positions as well. As I mentioned, we have that onsite maintenance team, and with the addition of this project, we'll have to add, as was mentioned earlier, about two, two members to that team. The third benefit I would like to highlight is the property taxes. Dodge Flat Solar Two will contribute to the property taxes to Washoe County, and this will annually be contributed, and it will help the county to meet its goals from boosting up the fire department to the police department to roads to schools, however the county best sees fit. And that's all I had for you today. Thank you for letting me speak, and I'm now open for any questions.
I have no public comment in chambers, and I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, with that said, I'll close public comment, bring back to the board for questions of the applicant or the planner. Do we have any questions?
Commissioner Lazariski, a question for the applicant, Stuart. I saw in the staff report and is noted in the presentation that the tribe was noticed. This is obviously directly adjacent to the tribal reservation. No comment was received publicly to the county request. Have you guys had any conversations with the tribe about traffic through the town, about impacts to their reservation?
Yes, thank you, Dan. Yes, we are in communication on a bi-weekly basis, if not more frequently with the tribe. We have a great tribal outreach program. The tribe came to us last year with their thoughts about how we can, because we developed Dodge Flat One, they had lots of thoughts on how we can improve our traffic impact. And because we, traffic will be going through Wadsworth, it's just a one-lane road, and we are working with them. They gave us some insights, and we actually updated our traffic impact analysis.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Can you turn on your mic, please, sir?
Question on the, on the grading.
In the staff report, we're talking about 1,178 acres. It includes ground disturbance of 21,186 cubic yards of cut and 125,634 cubic yards of fill. I go back to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency response. In its citing, major grading for 1,120 acres, ground disturbance of cut 59,060 cubic yards and 138,814 cubic yards of fill. I would like to know which is it?
So, Tim Evans, Planner?
So as far as that goes, there is a discrepancy there between those two. And the reason being is that initially, this project was actually sent out twice since there was a resubmittal. So the first time it was sent out, comments were received from Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. And then it was sent out again in July of this year to them, again. And the comments ended up, they stayed the same, but it was just that there was a mistake on their part with...
So the correct, so the correct numbers are in the staff report and not in the Truckee Meadows Planning Agency report?
Yeah, they just reused what they had before.
Okay, because that is quite a discrepancy.
Yeah, yeah. And I had talked to them about that, if there was a difference, you know, based on what they submitted the first time, the first comment that they submitted, and the, you know, since all that changed was the grading and some, some other small things, they had no issues with that. And they said all their comments stayed exactly the same from the first one. So that's why that there's a difference in the, in the comments.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions? Nope. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, unless we have some discussion. Does anybody have any discussion on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Kennedy, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved with conditions special use permit case number W S U P two three dash zero zero three six for Dodge Flat Energy Center LLC with the conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter. Having made all five findings in accordance A to this matter, having made all five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.810.30, and the additional development of natural resources findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.810.35. I further move to vary the development code standard in Table 110.406.05.1 to allow transmission poles up to 120 feet in height, waive the parking standards of WCC Section 110.410.25A and C-G, and waive the industrial landscaping standards of WCC Section 110.412.45, the civic landscaping standards of WCC Section 110.412.40, and the parking and loading landscaping standards of WCC Section 110.412.50.
Thank you. Do we have a second? No second. Do you have a second? Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And Tim, I just wanted to add, I did find that information that I spoke to, I don't know what happened, sorry. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
That has been a problem.
Recording in progress.
All right, it's 7:02. Let's bring the meeting back to order. We're on item 8C, Development Code Amendment, case number WDC-24-0005, Care of the Infirm. Mr. Lloyd, can you please announce it?
Yeah, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to initiate an amendment to Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Article 310, Temporary Uses and Structures to Modify the Administrative Permit Application Requirements to Occupy a Travel Trailer or Recreational Vehicle when necessary to temporarily care for the infirm, specifically by allowing nurse practitioners and physicians' assistance, in addition to physicians, to sign the required affidavit identifying both the initial and subsequent annual need for on-premise care and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. If the proposed amendments are initiated, the Planning Commission may recommend approval of the proposed ordinance as submitted, recommend approval with modifications based on input and discussion at the public hearing, or recommend denial. If approval is recommended, the Planning Commission is asked to authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to that effect. And representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Kat Oakley.
All right, Kat, floor is yours.
Thank you. Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning for the record. So, this case, WDC-24-0005, is an update to our Care of the Infirm regulations. So specifically, it updates the application and permitting requirements to improve the permitting process. And this comes out of our experience over the last couple of years where we've seen an increase in this type of application, which allows the temporary use of a recreational vehicle as a permanent residence for either a caretaker or an infirmed resident that is in need of onsite care with the approval of an administrative permit. With some of the housing challenges in our region, we have seen more of these applications. And as we've processed them, two kind of flaws in the process have revealed themselves. First is that the code requires an annual renewal but does not specify any requirements for that renewal. And then secondly, that a physician specifically is the only one who can sign that affidavit. And so, the proposed change is to allow licensed physicians, nurse practitioners, or physicians' assistants to sign that affidavit attesting to the need for onsite care. What we heard from a lot of applicants is that it is, can be quite difficult to actually get in to see a physician rather than one of these other types of medical practitioners, and that their primary medical provider is one of these practitioners. And so, doing this will just make the process more accessible for residents in Washoe County, allowing those individuals to sign the affidavit. And then, the second change would be to specify that the requirement for an annual renewal is a new affidavit attesting to the need for onsite care. During the initial application review with the Board of Adjustment, the site-specific considerations would have been taken into account already and would not have changed, whereas there is that need to just reaffirm that that onsite medical care is still needed and that this temporary use is still needed. And so, those are the two changes. This is what they look like, just in terms of the actual text that's changing. It's a pretty simple amendment. And it was originally part of what's now called Housing Affordability Package 2.5A. And so, it was discussed during the community meetings held for that set of amendments on June 24th, 26th, and July 1st, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. It was separated from those amendments to try to pare down that set of amendments, which you'll hear about later. But the discussions in those meetings did generally focus on other parts of the amendments that are being heard under a separate item. But as part of those discussions, staff did clarify that this temporary use for Care of the Infirm is currently allowed, so it's not being expanded in where it's allowed or diminished. That's going to stay the same, and that the focus of the amendments is on the permitting process and making improvements to that based on our experience. One of the following findings must be made to recommend approval of this Development Code Amendment, that is consistency with the master plan, promoting the purpose of the Development Code, responding to changed conditions, and having no adverse effects. And staff does make the case in the staff report that all four of these findings can be made. And so, the recommendation is for approval, for you all to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kat. All right, this time, I'd like to open up public comment. Do we have any public comment on this matter?
I have no public comment in chambers. I have no hands raised on sound.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring you back to the board for questions of staff. Do we have any questions of staff? Do we have any discussion among the board members? Okay, all entertain a motion.
Commissioner Lazarewski, I'd like to thank staff for bringing straightforward modification to code to make it more responsive to our community's needs. And given that, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate amendments to the Washoe County Development Code and recommend approval of WDC-24-0005 to amend Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Development Code, Article 310, Temporary Uses and Structures as reflected within the proposed ordinance contained in Exhibit A1. I further move to authorize the Chair to sign a resolution contained in Exhibit A on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission and to direct staff to present a report of this Commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation for approval is based on the ability to make all of the four findings set forth in Washoe County Code, Section 110.818.15E.
This is Rob. I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kat. Thank you for doing this. This will help out other boards and commissions, too. Okay. That brings us on to 8D, Development Code Amendment, case number WDC-24-0004, Housing Affordability Package 2.5. Mr. Lloyd, could you please announce this?
Yeah, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to initiate an amendment to the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110 by adding and amending various sections in Division 3, Regulation of Uses, Division 4, Development Standards, and Division 9, General Provisions. These updates include adding various sections to establish minimum standards for guest quarters, cottage court developments, and employee housing, relocate lot coverage standards from Article 306 to Article 406, establish required findings for the approval of a common open space development, and establish minimum standards for alleyways. These updates also include amending various sections to update the residential table of uses to include middle housing types, minor accessory dwelling units, guest quarters, multifamily minor, and employee housing. Modify allowances in the table for duplexes and multifamily housing within regulatory zones in which those use types are already allowed, and reorganize the uses in that table. Update the residential use type list to add and define multifamily minor, the middle housing use types of triplex, quadplex, and cottage court, guest quarters, and employee housing, and reorganize the list. Update detached accessory structure regulations to reference lot coverage standards rather than enumerate them, and to modify deed restriction requirements for connection to water and wastewater facilities. Modify attached and detached accessory dwelling unit standards to regulate their use on parcels with middle housing types, and specify their mutual exclusivity with guest quarters. Modify Table 110-406-051, governing regulatory zone development standards to consolidate the separate tables into one table, and to make modifications to minimum lot sizes, setbacks, and minimum lot widths for certain regulatory zones. Modify common open space development standards to clarify that detention ponds and drainage facilities cannot be included in common open space. Modify off-street parking requirements to add standards for the new housing types, and modify the requirements for duplexes. Modify landscaping exemptions to include middle housing types as an exemption. Modify common open space standards to add dog parks and pocket parks as permissible types of open space, and require common open space for all multifamily developments with five or more units. And add or amend various definitions and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. If the proposed amendments are initiated, the Planning Commission may recommend approval of the proposed ordinance as submitted, recommend approval with modifications based on input and discussion at the public hearing, or recommend denial. If approval is recommended, the Planning Commission is asked to authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to that effect.
Thank you. And as far as the timer is concerned, we are going to give Chris more than 15 minutes. If you get to the 20-minute mark, we'll be talking.
This is Kennedy. I wanted to disclose that members of the Spanish Springs community have been emailing me about this issue. I have only responded by telling them where the meeting is. I hope that's not a conflict.
Thank you for that disclosure.
All right, Chris, floor is yours. Let's go.
Thank you. We're looking at WDC-24-0004. This is Housing Affordability Package 2.5A. So before I get started, staff has received a lot of public comment. We've read, we've heard these concerns from many residents. So before I jump into the presentation, I want to take this opportunity to provide clarity on what this package is not. So this package is not proposing any development projects, including apartment complexes within the Spanish Springs area or in any other area of Washoe County. This package is not proposing high rises or modifying any height regulations. This package is not expanding where multifamily use types are allowed, and it is not changing any zoning designations within the county. So a little bit of, housing affordability and attainability are priorities of Washoe County that are outlined within Envision Washoe 2040, which is Washoe County's master plan. Housing affordability is a real concern within this region. We've seen a 145 increase in median home value between 2010 and 2022. That amounts to roughly $215,000 in 2010 to about $530,000 in 2022. Additionally, we've seen a 58% increase in median household income from 2010 to 2022, which amounts to about $50,000 in 2010 to $80,000 in 2022. Ultimately, the housing prices are increasing at a rate much faster than what income is, which is leading to further housing attainability issues. Additionally, housing supply is also a major concern. So we need, Washoe County, within the unincorporated Washoe County, we need 6,840 dwelling units to support population increases through 2042. Additionally, there's an existing shortfall of 7,350 affordable units that are needed. These amendments that are proposed are the county's attempt to do our part to address the regional housing issue. So the National Association of Home Builders Cost of Housing Index shows that 50% of a typical income for a family is needed for a mortgage payment, and roughly 100% of low-income families is needed for a mortgage payment. This is in our region. This index also highlights Reno as being the 10th-most cost burdened or burdened housing market in the nation. And the chart before you reflects the percent of cost-burden renters. So this basically means that renters are spending 30% or more of their income on housing. And overall, roughly 50% of renters within our region are cost-burdened. What this shows, though, is that housing accessibility is an issue across all parts of our community, but particularly, the dark red is for younger adults and our seniors. And this set of amendments is simply trying to provide more housing options for all the groups. So I've also provided the National Association of Home Builders Housing Opportunity Index. This chart shows how affordable it was for one to purchase a home. And I use "was intentional" because in the first quarter of 2014, almost 65% of the population could afford a median-priced home within our region. In the first quarter of 2021, almost 55% of the population could afford the median home price. And as of the third quarter in 2023, it dropped to only 17.5%. So the statistics outlined on the previous slides highlight why housing is such a high priority for Washoe County. Additionally, I've provided some slides related to the Washoe County Strategic Plan. And so, periodically, the Board of County Commissioners adopts a strategic plan that establishes a list of high-priority items for Washoe County. Under the current strategic plan, expanding appropriate housing options across the community is one of those top priorities. This includes expanding housing supply, streamlining permitting and planning processes, and creating incentives to spur housing, which this set of amendments is intending to do. So a little overview of what missing middle housing is, or in this case, the proposed middle housing. Middle housing is a range of house-scale buildings with multiple units that are compatible in scale to detached, single-family homes. It's a housing type that has typically not been well-represented within Washoe County, and these housing types are often more affordable and attainable than single-family detached homes. The above graphics was provided by Opticos, and it shows the missing middle housing types. And it goes from duplex all the way to triplex stacked, all the way to high-density mid-rise. The new uses proposed to be allowed within the suburban areas of the county are largely represented on the left side of the image above, and these are the lesser, less-dense middle housing types. So with the middle housing use types, I've provided a slide of what's proposed within the ordinance. It outlines all the proposed house types that were included in Package 2.5A. These include triplex, quadplex, and cottage court developments. One way to look at cottage courts developments is like a tiny home community. I should note that duplex has long been part of the Development Code, but as part of this package, the duplex use type is being moved to middle housing for consistency and clarity. I want to expand on why Package 2.5A seems so large and why, at the beginning, the intro was so lengthy. It's because when we are adding new use types, it requires us to open various sections of the code, even for one-line changes. And these sections of the code, which are going to be outlined throughout this presentation, include landscaping, parking, and even definitions. And this is just to ensure that we're establishing regulations and standards associated with these new uses. So, density is a real important topic as part of this package, and I want to stress that there are no changes or increases to maximum allowed density within any residential regulatory zones. So the housing types, all of the housing types, still will need to comply with the underlying density. And one of the examples we've provided above is for the medium-density suburban, or MDS, regulatory zone, which is one of the more common regulatory zones within the county. So currently, you're allowed to have three dwellings per acre, so three single-family dwellings, or five attached dwellings per acre. Under the new proposal, you're allowed the same three single-family dwellings detached or five dwellings attached, but you're also allowed any variety of middle housing, which could be a duplex and a triplex or cottage court. This package is simply to broaden the options for dwelling unit configurations throughout the county. So a little bit of additional overview. So this is the table of uses as it currently stands under Washoe County Code. And that includes duplex, multifamily, single-family attached, and detached. But it's been silent on a variety of housing types for decades, and this package intends to fix that. By adding new housing use types to our code, we are adding more specificity and granularity in how we define residential uses. This allows us to regulate with more precision, and we can streamline and expand housing types where it makes sense in our suburban zones, while keeping multifamily use types in the urban and neighborhood commercial regulatory zones that are designed for them and prepared for them. And so this is the proposed use table. So what's proposed is to keep multifamily, multifamily minor within family residential, but expand to a middle housing section, which includes the duplex, triplex, quadplex, and cottage court. What you'll notice is multifamily and multifamily minor have been separated out, so multifamily minor is anything under 20 units. Multifamily will be 20 units or more. Additionally, we're proposing to change the permitting processes for duplexes and multifamily minor. However, all multifamily use types will continue to only be allowed within the urban and neighborhood commercial regulatory zones. Additionally, we're also including employee housing as part of this package, which will be limited to the commercial regulatory zones. So, as part of establishing new uses, again, we have to open quite a number of code provisions. Article 304 is the use classification system, so this defines all the use types that are referred to within the use table within 302. So we're adding definitions of guest quarters, multifamily minor, multifamily, group homes, employee housing, and middle housing. That middle housing also includes a duplex, triplex, quadplex, and cottage courts. Additionally, we're updating the terminology by replacing families with households and relocating specific code requirements from the use definitions to more appropriate sections. Article 306 is specific to accessory uses and structures, so this is the code that outlines typically like accessory dwelling units. We're adding the guest quarters use type as an accessory structure for semi-separate habitation without a kitchen. And we're also proposing to relocate lot coverage requirements. In terms of the guest quarters use type, it's a direct response to public feedback from Package 1 and Package 2 of these housing packages. We heard from many individuals throughout these processes that this was a desired use that has historically been prohibited under Washoe County Code. So Article 313 is a brand-new article that's being introduced to the Washoe County Development Code, and it's introducing regulations that are established for cottage court developments as well as employee housing. The image before you is just a typical example of cottage court development. And the cottage court regulations include maximum dwelling unit square footage, which is up to 1,000 square feet, parking standards, common open space requirements, and site orientation standards. And then employee housing, some of the regulations include prohibition of inoperable vehicle storage, requirement for onsite property managers, specification for the essential facilities such as kitchens and bathrooms, and again, common open space requirements. So Article 406 is our building placement standard section. This governs setbacks, lot width, area, height, and density. Package 2.5A is proposing to consolidate six tables, which regulate all the above, the lot width and area, into one specific table, one large table, for ease of use and clarity. Additionally, we are proposing to reduce minimum lot widths for the medium-density suburban and high-density suburban regulatory zones, as well as all urban regulatory zones. This just allows for more flexibility for lot configurations with these new housing types. Additionally, we're looking to align the minimum lot area for all urban regulatory zones. So Article 408 touches on common open space developments. These are typically seen within tentative subdivision maps or subdivision processes that allow flexibility in lot size and setback requirements. So this is typically a process that allows for a lot of different configurations for subdivisions and potentially clustering. And so, part of this proposal is to prohibit the usage of detention and retention basins as open space, keep them for what they're intended to, while also introducing new required findings to ensure that the benefit of common open space developments is being met by the purpose. Article 410 adds new parking requirements for middle housing use types, as well as introducing alleyway standards. So there is a discrepancy between the staff report and what's seen above. All the proposed parking is to be one per dwelling unit, which must be covered. Cottage cluster, within the staff report, calls out for a garage. The ordinance does show it correctly as must be covered. And then employee housing dormitory also requires 0.25 spaces per approved occupant. Again, we're opening Article 412, landscaping. Under this code, currently, single-family residential use types are exempt from landscaping requirement, and this package will also exempt middle housing use types. However, it should be noted that employee housing, multifamily housing, and housing that's associated with subdivisions, whether they be single-family or middle-housing subdivisions, will still be required to meet all landscaping requirements. Open space standards within 432 are related to what can be used within residential developments and subdivisions. We're proposing to add two new types of common open space, dog parks and pocket parks. What we found is some subdivisions have small areas of land that are typically unused, and this is a good way to provide a benefit to the community in that small space. Additionally, we are lowering the threshold for common open space requirements in multifamily developments from 12 dwelling units to five. And the reason being is because of, it's an equity issue. When we're looking at multifamily minor, it starts at that five dwellings, and we want to make sure that all the residents within multifamily want to make sure that all the residents within multifamily housing have amenities and benefits. And the last one that's being opened is Article 902, which is the definition. As part of introducing new use types, new housing types to a development code, definitions are often required, and these can be found within Article 304 and Article 902. Additionally, as part of opening this provision, we are updating the master plan references to Envision Washoe 2040. So, community meetings. We held three community meetings. The first was a hybrid meeting on June 24th, in which 85 individuals were present. The second was held two days later, on June 26th, and it was a remote-only meeting. Fifty-five people attended. And the third was in person at the county chambers, and we had 41 people present. So this was really high attendance for a development code amendment, and we were really pleased with how many people had interest. And I'm going to touch up on some of the changes that came about from those, these public input and community outreach meetings. Those changes will be covered in a future slide. These meetings were held from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., but due to the number of people that showed up and the interest, we extended those meetings, all of them, to 6:30. Additionally, we also provided a housing survey on the Neighborhood Meeting Hub website, in which 38 residents completed the survey, with the majority not in favor of the amendments. So some of the key topics of these community meetings were removal of the two-story height limit in Spanish Springs and North Valleys, concerns regarding apartment potentials in the rural areas, infrastructure impacts on roadways, schools, sewer, and water, and concerns on potential density increases in suburban and rural residential areas. So changes related to the public input. So, again, some of the key concerns that were really significant were the height limit removal, the infrastructure, as well as the sheer size of the original Package 2.5. And as a result of that, we removed Articles 208, 214, and 216. Those are specific to the North Valleys planning area, Spanish Springs planning area, and the Southwest Truckee Meadows planning area. Additionally, we removed 310, which was the care of the infirm, which you heard before this item, and we removed 402, which was specific to density. We also had numerous changes to the proposed amendments based off public feedback. And we want to note that Spanish Springs will not be brought back for Package 2.5B, but Article 402 will be part of Package 2.5B. So these are all the changes related to public input, and I think these are really important because it highlights all the concerns and comments that came from the many people that attended these meetings and reached out to us. So we, I'm going to read through all of these. We added minor ADUs to Article 302. We renamed the bunkhouse use type to employee housing. We specified that cottages within a cottage court are located on a single parcel. We removed the term granny flats from the ADU definition. We revised guest quarter definitions to match the language in other ADU definitions. We removed redundant language within the ADU standards. We aligned the maximum square footage for guest quarters with ADUs. We broadened parking placement options for cottage court developments. We required that cottage court developments be served by sewer. We removed the North Valleys and Southwest Truckee Meadows planning area changes from the proposed DCA. And we removed the Spanish Springs specific changes from the proposed DCA. So findings. The Planning Commission must make one of the following four findings in order to recommend approval of this DCA. The staff report explains how all four can be made, but to speak specifically to the first finding, this development code amendment is a direct implementation to the Washoe County Master Plan's highest priority items, which as previously described, also aligns with the high priority items within the Washoe County Strategic Plan. Staff is able to make all four required findings. Staff is recommending approval, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, at this time, we are going to open up public comment, but I want to let you guys know that you've got three minutes to make public comment on this. And if somebody has said something before you, please don't repeat it. If you agree with what they're saying, just say, "I agree with what so-and-so said," or something along that lines. We need to keep this meeting in order. If it gets out of order, then we will, hopefully, hopefully, I don't have to address that. But at this time, I would like to open up public comment for this item.
In chambers, I have Pat Davison, followed by Melody Shooter.
Good evening, Chair Pearson, Commissioners. Thanks for this opportunity to comment on proposed changes, which focus on our gap, the lack of attainable middle-income housing types and diversity.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, Pat Davison for the record. As we seek solutions to our housing shortage, kudos to staff for including the five examples in the back of the staff report. As I see it, middle-income housing types are designed to meet the needs of those residents who make too much money to use subsidized low-income housing, but not enough money to afford a market-rate unit. Staff describes these housing types as more economically accessible. I like that. Federal assistance programs are all about the lower-income brackets with little emphasis given to the higher-income brackets. Let's focus on the county residents who are not served by the federal programs, but who desperately want to find an economically accessible house or apartment. I have a couple of comments on the specific changes multifamily, as Chris described. I support the two categories, but note zoning did not change where those multifamily units were allowed. Triplex and quadplex, I support because these design and configuration changes allow for diversity of housing types in MDS and HDS where multifamily is not allowed. But note that triplex and quadplex are not allowed in LDS or the rural zones. And last, employee housing implies that the employer is engaged in solutions for housing, which I think is great. There are those who are concerned about additional growth. They have valid questions about law enforcement, school, et cetera. I encourage all those here tonight and those watching to become involved in the advanced planning for these government services. If residential development on a specific parcel is not desired, buy it at fair market value to respect the owner's property rights and then dedicate it to permanent open space. This has a direct negative impact on housing, however, because it further reduces the available land supply. If quality of life brought you here, some of the things that can be done to balance growth with the defined quality of life include night sky ordinances to reduce light pollution, more trails to access BLM land, landscape berms and buffers to reduce road noise. The big question is, how do we keep the door open to newcomers who want the same things we all want and still maintain a quality of life? Instead of stopping growth, managing or directing growth to accommodate newcomers is a better way to go, in my opinion. That involves involvement, that takes involvement in the planning process, but the outcome is worth it. I got involved in the housing issues because I was concerned about the existing need for more than 7,000 units, as well as the future need for more than 6,000 units in the county. Where are all these county residents going to live? Your kids, your grandkids. We, as a community, have a fundamental problem. There is not enough economically accessible housing already on the ground. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will actually have Matthew Shooter, followed by Melody Shooter. Please state your first and last name for the record.
Matthew Chutter, speaking as an individual. Commissioners? Again, I'm before a planning body. Again, I voice concerns. The cover page of Envision 2040 shows a gorgeous scene of mountains and undeveloped land bearing no resemblance to what our area is rapidly transforming itself into. Clogged roads bounded by view-destroying sound walls, mobile home classrooms, and smog-filled valleys. One of the pages is titled, "Why Now?", I ask the same question. Our region of mostly government land with islands of private land has been transformed from a small city core, surrounded by suburban and rural land, into just another overdeveloped region of concrete and asphalt artificial landscapes. Envision 2040 cites influx as a driver for the erosive changes recommended in the latest round of recycled zoning downgrades marketed as affordability. Your solution changes to accommodate that influx. Infill, you say, is one solution, but infilled areas are precisely the urban sprawl, you say you want to avoid. Mass transit is not going to solve road congestion, neither is road widening, county toll roads, as these merely enlarge the radius of sprawl by reducing the time per mile. We don't all work at the neighborhood factory assigned by the Politburo, and because a job can be miles away, mass transit will be inconvenient, expensive, i.e., resource-wasteful, and unworkable for many. Otherwise, the private sector would be doing this already. On the other hand, 40-acre parcels could go on forever and never result in any urban sprawl. Your solution of infill is the problem, and the driver of the problem. Further, the document mentions doing our part to address the trendy missing middle, a euphemism for low-income housing. Who assigned that burden to us? Our part of what plan or agenda exactly? Section 110 dot 402 actually incentivizes high-density development and urban sprawl, maybe not this time around, but in successive steps. By subsidizing small footprint homes versus larger homes, it will make larger homes less affordable for those with larger families and those with live-in relatives. Although it artificially increases the supply of dense housing for low-income workers, depressing the wages they must demand for their employers to live here, it also minimizes the equity they can build in otherwise smaller homes. The real problem is poor job options, stagnant wage opportunities, inflation, and the resulting inability to afford everything that needs addressing, not downgrading people's hopes and expectations for housing. Envision 2040 addresses serious issues by blithely dismissing them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Melody Chutter, followed by Trista Gomez.
Please state your name for the record.
Melody Chutter for the record. Every year, all year, we have to worry about fire. Your solution, a uniform building code, inadequate design for our existing local fire issues. The latest proposal on actual developments put a ton of people at the emergency evacuation choke point of Caya del Plata and Pyramid Highway, all of them expecting to use two-lane roads accessed by a stoplight. Utterly unrealistic. Secondary and territory evacuation routes are poor and non-existent. You kept permits for development and then addressed water and sewage references, the community well permits currently on the table. I would remind you that the trustee assured us seven years ago that no new well would be required for future development. And one of the commissioners here knows this. Ample time for water lines, how many new fire stations and police posts has been built to serve the new resident? How long has ladder, how many long ladder trucks have been ready to go for high-rise warehouses planned under the only recently tabled zoning changes? What about school roads? Assures from the county agencies are no substitute for nearby fire station and don't buy police cars or pay officers who don't care about the area because people have been having problems, and they don't do nothing. Before approving any new high-density projects, these concerns need to be dealt with, if not with expenditures upfront, then with realistic plans, realistic budgets, and realistic information which can be rolled out concurrent with the development. There are limits to everything. Development is no exception. Learning to accept those limits, to prioritize and to deal with these issues early, is a key to achieving optimal results. I don't see any of this, either in the upstream planning or the day-to-day implementation. We cannot continue to ignore and just build and then worry about everything later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Trista Gomez, followed by just initials T.R.
Please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name's Trista Gomez. Please record my statements verbatim. Thank you for having the meeting at night, so that more residents can come. And I appreciate the clarification on the, on what they say is the lack of density increase, but there is a density increase because we are going to increase the amount of cars that are on the road. These development and updates have been justified through public input, but there's several residents, some of whom are here, that had no idea that these changes were taking place or being discussed. While interested parties, such as developers, politicians, and huge employers, have lobbyists and other people who alert the campaign for these changes, the residents don't have these luxuries. Residents are working long hours to sit in heavy traffic that's relatively new, while passing different spots around town that smell like sewage. The sewage remedy is expensive, and it will be another cost that will burden residents. The residents should have had direct outreach, letting them know that there would be these density changes. Even though they're not called density changes, they will add to our roads and our traffic. The residents would have asked, "What's going to happen to our wells? Are you going to guarantee, are you going to guarantee when they need to be dug? Our sewer, are you going to take care of the stench that we smell while we're driving around? The traffic? We sit in traffic three to four times longer than we did just a couple of years ago. I ran for office, and one of the constituents told me that they were not able to do a medical transport company out on Spanish Springs and Pyramid Highway because of the traffic problems. They couldn't guarantee that they would be able to get there in time." Were the working people in the community, were the backbone, were your main tax base, yet you have, you say that these changes were made with public input? Well, it was not ours, and those statements are exclusionary at best. Are you guaran, I mean, what are you going to do with all of the things? Drainage, wells, sewer? You haven't guaranteed those. Those are going to be affected, and when they're affected, they're going to be, it's going to be, "Oh, engineering approved that. Oh, we had public input to cover that." But that's not going to be, that's not going to help the residents who have been here. Are you going to compensate us? There is a, there's a 1/2 percent, $5,000 developer tax or developer input for some of these things. And in the meanwhile, we're paying for the increased public infrastructure that's needed. We are paying for the increased public services that are needed. We are paying for the increased public everything that's needed, and we are the ones who have the least amount of ability to pay for those services, yet we're being burdened with those Heavy development in any jurisdiction does not and has not benefited existing residents in any jurisdiction, California, Idaho, Oregon, or even Utah. The increase in development helps public sector workers, but it does not help residents. It does not help our quality of life. It will not help Spanish Springs residents, and it has not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have T.R., followed by Mark Ray.
Please state your name for the record. For the record, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, don't start it yet. I'm just trying to clarify. Okay, spelling my name. Keep that thought. Whatever it was, keep that thought. I'm not an eloquent speaker by any means, and the residents can all name the problems and issues, as I'm sure all of you can. I don't know how many of you go to each of the different districts. It says here that this particular item, Commission District, is all districts. So, not being a good speaker, I'm going to paraphrase a former landlord of mine. A man whose mind is changed against his will is of the same opinion still. Nothing I can say, I have no words, that would ever change your minds, but hopefully, some of the questions will make you question some of the issues further, some of the people who have spoken, perhaps. So, when you reduce something, do you really allow for more flexibility and configurations? So, when you reduce something, do you really allow for more flexibility and configurations? If your living room is made smaller, are you really going to be able to move your living room furniture around in a bunch of different ways? Yes, there is an issue with fire and ingresses and egresses. Have any of you ever been in an evacuation? Do you know, I looked up an evacuation plan for Spanish Springs, looking at maps, not ghost maps. My friend over there, who I think I met twenty years ago. But did you know, there's no evacuation map for North Pyramid Highway? There's an evacuation for Sparks to exit north on Pyramid Highway, on Vista, on Sparks, et cetera. And I was reminded of that. Did you ever get caught in traffic when Burning Man was coming back or going out? Yeah, so, think about some of the questions. Do you think they're consistent with, as I have heard for twenty-some years, with the alignment of the character that exists in the area? That has always been something that I would hear at a stakeholders' meeting. And yes, I am a stakeholder. I am a resident. I may not be a developer, but I am a stakeholder. It is my community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mark Ray, followed by Dan Herman.
Good evening. My name is Mark Ray. I'm an attorney in Reno and my client is a private group in Spanish Springs called Citizens for Spanish Springs, organized for this very night. There's thirty-eight households involved, almost all of them are in Spanish Springs Valley ranches. Couple in Bridle Path, one in La Pasada, so they're right in the heart of the action here. They do not, my clients do not oppose good development, but they don't want Spanish Springs urbanized like so many other places have become. I learned from the staff, and Mr. Brozick and Ms. Oakley, that the neighborhood commercial zoning, which abuts my client's properties on Pyramid Highway, currently allows duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, or whatever you're trying to approve. It already allows it, but with a permit. And I can tell you my client's feelings about that. We're okay with that. That's good. Let's have permits. Let's make it be permitted so that the people who are affected have a voice. There's issues that my clients have with density and infrastructure, which are well-known in Spanish Springs for all of you who've traveled through it or tried to. But the most important thing that's left out in the staff presentation is that, yes, it's true. You're not changing zoning, but you're making it easier to build developments, projects that require multifamily occupancy. And by doing so, you will increase the density. You will do so naturally and it's common sense. Can we talk about the findings for a second that you have to make? I know it's only one out of four, sounds easy. But, for example, finding number three, response to change conditions. The proposed Development Code Amendment responds to change conditions, but there's no detail on what the change conditions are. We know what they are. It's congested, full of people, and on top of one another. You can't hardly get your way through the valley, let alone find time to enjoy the quality of life that everyone's been talking about. So, what is the logical thing to do when you're dealing with congestion? To make it easier to develop multifamily or duplex, triplex, fourplex, call it what you want, whatever label? That's not the right thing to do. We can't make that finding. How about the finding that it promotes the purpose of the Development Code, which happens to be public health and welfare? What about the public health and welfare of all the thousands of families that are already there? What about their public health and welfare? I ask you to consider that, please. I think that's what you're supposed to be doing. How about number four, no adverse effects? That's hilarious. It says, "The proposed Development Code Amendment will not adversely affect the implications of the policies of the county." Your policies are to help the people that live here, aren't they? Of course, there's going to be adverse effects. The more you develop out there, the worse it's going to get. It's not going to get better. I'm sorry, I'm done. I couldn't get to number one, but I knew what I said.
Thank you. Next we have Dan Herman, followed by Donnie Olson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dan Herman, Spanish Springs. I've been here for twenty-five years fighting what we're fighting right now. And we shouldn't have to be fighting and fighting and fighting to have a rural lifestyle that our community was developed around, as Trevor Lloyd knows for sure. He was, been involved in a lot of the development in Spanish Springs. So, let me start off with something positive. These open space developments that we've been doing, and there's a couple going to come in front of you, are terrible. All they do is aid the developers. You take land that they can't build on, then you let them do three houses per acre, vice, one house per acre. And I am really encouraged by this positive in the 3.2 code that you guys are looking at development. So, we need to rein in some of these open space developments and make it really developments that the people can use. So, I feel that the developers are driving the changes in 3.2. Neighborhood commercial should not be residential zoning. I don't know where that came from, that they're going to put residential zoning into neighborhood commercial. I'm a direct, I am directly affected with six to seven neighborhood commercial zoning properties by my property on Pyramid Highway. My zoning is one house on ten acres and that's all I have on it. And then you want to allow these developers come in with neighborhood commercial, put triplexes, duplexes right next to me? I don't think so. I'm also against these changes to the setback, minimum lot width, and spacing between houses. Go out and look at some of these developments. These houses are fifteen, twenty feet apart, house to house. And you guys want to reduce that spacing between houses? That's just not right. I mean, nobody wants, I don't want to live there. You don't want to live there, or guaranteed you don't want to live there. So, this process that you're doing right now is rushed. Back off, take it back to the citizens, do some more community meetings, and let them digest what this changes that we've done to Spanish Springs. And this is countywide. So, countywide via, are you going to enforce these if it's different?
Thank you. Next we have Donnie Olson, followed by Aiden Downey.
Hello, Donnie Olson. I had a lot of things to say. Some have already been addressed by everyone that spoke before me, except for the very first speaker. I did not agree with what she said. You know, we live in a rural community. You guys have taken the wording out for Spanish Springs, but you've made it countywide. We're county. So, when I'm, when I hear it won't affect you, I really don't believe it, sorry. I've seen too many things go the opposite way that we've been told. We, we live in a rural area. We have, there's horses, biking, hiking, motorcycles. Our community is filled with walkers and kids. And if we really want to do something for the future, our grandkids and children, rather than building, you know, multifamily dwellings and bunk houses, oh, wait, sorry, employee housing, otherwise known as bunk houses, why don't we invest in the children? Why don't we put things in our community that, that, that do something good for the kids? If you really care about future kids, my grandkids, my kids, we all live in Spanish Springs. So, I think some thoughts need to be given to that. We moved there for a reason. It's rural. I came from California. I don't want to live in California. I don't want to live in downtown Reno. If I did, I would have moved there. But you have to consider our quality of life when all these changes are being proposed. Maybe you're going to address the water problem with the proposed treatment, water treatment facility out in Palomino Farms. I've heard that's going to somehow help Spanish Springs. I wonder how those people all feel out there about that with the sewage treatment water that will eventually be our drinking water and injected back into the aquifers for all of our wells, which a lot of us have private wells. I live on a community well in Bridle Path. I've also, you know, is part of your plan, this La Pasada toll road? I mean, what is the plan out there? All I hear is employee housing. What, are they going to live on top of future industry, on top of buildings that how, you know, big manufacturers? I mean, I don't know. To some, a layman like me, and I'm not that well-spoken like the previous, but it just sounds like a lot of people in a, in a, in a small space. And that, as you know, leads to what people have said, crime, infrastructure. The new schools out there, they're already overcrowded. What do you plan to do with all these people and kids? And I remember something Kat Oakley said at the July first meeting, that she's aware that we have one person in an eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot home. As if that's a bad thing? It's not bad.
Next we have Aiden Downey, followed by Terry Plies.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name's Aiden Downey and it's late, so I'll be brief. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Nevada Realtors. We'd like to express our support for the Washoe Housing Affordable Housing Package 2.5. This code update will allow for more innovative housing solutions and provide more attainable housing for people entering the market. We applaud the hard work of staff on these code amendments, especially Kat, Eric, and Chris for working with our membership. We look forward to the implementation of these amendments across the entire county that our development community can provide more diverse housing at an attainable price for new home buyers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Terry Plies, followed by Marilyn Leckland.
Good evening. Don't be fooled by that presentation that you got about these inflated housing prices. Everything has been inflating.
Can you please state your name and we'll start the timer over. State your name for the record. We have people that transpo-
My name is Terry Plies.
Thank you.
But anyhow, we've had hyperinflation for the last three and three-quarters of years now. We, I can't say what the future's going to hold, but I can rebut that presentation you saw about the inflation, inflated housing prices. I've been around for seventy-four years now. I've seen the real estate market go sky-high. I've seen it go sky-low. Right now, it's sky-high. And what's going to happen when it goes low? It's just like Chicken Little coming out here and telling us the sky's falling. It's not. So, I really don't see any need for that. And again, as usual, government people do, they always put the cart in front of the horse. We haven't heard anything about, let's improve all the infrastructure. And right now, anywhere in Washoe County, except for when you get way out there, everything's overtaxed, all the roads, everything else. It's miserable. So, as far as I'm concerned, it's just another bad decision made by agency that hasn't made very many good decisions. And decision, to prove my point, decision they made for me, your predecessors, authorized an industrial zone, and they put a factory forty feet from my fence line. See, this is the kind of decisions that the planning people make. They put the factory up. They said that they could exempt, they would exempt them from all the building codes or all the, what do you call it, development plan. And they did. So, this is, this comes from my patio table. Hold on. I turned all my volume down. Nope, I can't get it to work now. Okay, you don't get to listen to it. But, the factory puts out noise twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Five days a week, they, you know. Okay, good evening.
Thank you. Next I have Marilyn Leckland, followed by Christopher Burke.
My name is Marilyn Leckban, a private individual. And I'd just like to touch on a few points. A couple have been said already. Traffic on Pyramid. I know we're widening, but the widening section is still full of traffic and it just zoops everybody down to a new standstill's point. So, traffic on Pyramid cannot withstand this development that you're thinking about doing. I'd like to address the fact that there's no public transportation out where we are on Pyramid. So, where's your low-income people going to get to work? There's no public transportation. And I also know personally that our schools are to the breaking point as far as attendance. They cannot handle any more children. Where are the new schools going to come from? Are the developers going to build them? Are us taxpayers going to be responsible for new schools? I would like you to look at that, please. And some others have already touched on water. I'm on a septic and a well. I just spent $15,000 to get a new pump in. So, what's going to happen to our wells? Where are these people going to get water that are going to come into these developments? And then I, Chris did a really good report, but I'd like you to look at several of the areas of his report. One of the things that he said is they're going to have one parking place per unit. So, you're making all this housing available, but you're going to only let one person move into a unit? That's not realistic. Every unit is going to have at least two drivers. The other thing is, he said, we're going to have units up to a thousand square feet. But there was no mention as to what the lower level would be. So, I would ask you to look at that. Are there going to be five-hundred-square-foot units? Six-hundred-square-foot units? So, that's, that's just a couple of things that I would ask you to look at. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have Christopher Burke, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good evening, Christopher Burke. I live in Spanish Springs. Want to touch on what Attorney Ray said about the four facts, findings of facts. He went through three of them. None of them met the standard, and the first one doesn't either. It has to be consistent with the master plan, but what are they doing here? They're adding middle housing. So, it's not consistent. It doesn't substantially comply. So, none of the findings of fact are met, so it should be denied on that. And second, I just want to talk about statistics. I know one other person mentioned that. What aggravates people is there's no transparency. I know one other person mentioned that. What aggravates people is there's no transparency. When they gave the statistics about housing going up from 2010 to 2022, 150 something percent, they took when the market bottomed in 2010 up to 2022. Of course, it went up dramatically because it had dropped so far. I had brought that up at one of the prior meetings, and I, then Ms. Oakley said, oh, well, it's only gone up 70 something percent since 2019. Why not say that from the beginning? Because they want to make it look worse than it is. Also, they talk about, well, 65% of the people could afford housing in 2014, but now it's only 17%. Again, you have to, that's not a good enough statistic. What was it in 2004? And what are we basing it on? So if any of you have kids or grandkids, they don't want to buy houses. They don't want to get married. They don't even want to work. So these statistics are so skewed that it comes across as them trying to sneak stuff through and hoodwink you, and they use terminology that sounds nice. Oh, the missing middle. Oh, we have to take care of them. It's the low-income lottery, and we don't want to fund it in Spanish Springs, and that's why we're asking you to deny Section 302 or Article 302. Thank you.
Lastly, in chambers, I have Janet Butcher. If anyone else in chambers would like to make public comment, please come fill out a sheet now.
Janet Butcher, for the record, I wonder if there's been a study done about what the occupancy rate for the apart, all these apartment buildings that are being built all over town. I, I, sometimes when I drive by, I go, oh, there's another one. Pop right up out of the ground. And when they build these new expensive ones, it also drives up the cost of the rundown complexes. I have a family member that lives in a complex that it, it, it needs a lot of work done on it. In fact, she's got a hole in her ceiling for six months, and they haven't fixed it yet. But she pays as much as what somebody in a nice apartment building pays. But they've built these apartments. What is the occupancy rate? Why do we need to build out in areas where, like people have said before, we spent, my husband and I spent 18 months looking for the right place. We wanted to move from northwest Reno, and we wanted to move out away from everything. And then just, I'll just follow up. I'm glad that Donnie brought up that you can call it employee housing, but it's still bunkhouse housing. It's still the same concept. But the comment about having the, like, more units and stuff together will minimize road building, and the lady just brought up basically kind of the same thing. If you have more people in a smaller area, then you're not going to minimize what you need for roads. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further public comment in chambers. I currently don't have any hands raised on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak, now's your chance. Please raise your hand. Okay, looks like no hands raised on Zoom.
So nobody else wants to make any public comment? Last chance. You've come up here and seen them, and they'll have you fill out a little form. You can speak right now. Speak your name for the record, and then go over there and fill out the form.
Thank you. My name is Alan Lefler. I'm a resident of Spanish Springs. I've been here for three years, and in that time, I've watched the development and the overdevelopment and just the influx of people coming from all over and wanting to live here because it's, it's ideal. It's very nice. It's rural. But the problem is, is that the infrastructure that this county and Spanish Springs needs is not being met. It's not being met on the roads. It's not being met in the businesses that need to come in. It's not being met because everything's gone sky high, and it's much, much harder for people to come in and exist and develop a life for themselves and their family. I hope that you folks take time to really inquire and consider some of the movements that you're making. And I think that 302 is not a good idea. I think it should be voted down, and I think it should be looked at as maybe something to draw from, but not to impose on the populace of Spanish Springs as well as throughout the whole county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, last call for public comments. Anybody else want to speak on public comment about this? Okay, we're going to close down public comment both on Zoom and in chambers, and we're going to bring it back to the board for questions of staff.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
I have multiple questions. First of all, what's a pocket park?
Chris Bronzick, Washoe County Planning. Pocket parks are just smaller parks associated with residential subdivisions. So if you've got a quarter, an acre, or, you know, 5,000 square foot area, it's basically a pocket park or a community gathering area. Playground can go there. It's basically an amenity for the subdivisions.
Okay.
Additionally, they're, typically, they're maintained by an association, an HOA, not maintained by Washoe County also.
I see. Okay. And you mentioned that the lot sizes are changing. How much?
Lot sizes are being reduced for the urban zones. Give me just a second to pull up.
Is it just urban or any of the residential?
It's just the urban. So currently, the low-density urban has a 3,700 square foot minimum lot size. The medium-density urban and the high-density urban are just being brought into alignment with that lot size. And then for, just to cover setbacks, since I heard that as a question, the only setbacks that are being reduced are high-density suburban and the urban regulatory zones, and it's only the rear setback.
Okay. And you mentioned, and then there was discussion about it, that these proposals will not increase density?
That is correct.
Okay, so if you put a fourplex on a property that was a single property, doesn't that increase density?
So the way it works, the way density works is it's based off of lot size and the regulatory zone. So for a median-density suburban property, for one acre, it could have three single-family detached dwellings or up to five attached dwellings. The suburban residential master plan designation has a maximum density of nine. And that comes through that high-density suburban. So if the land size, the acreage of a parcel does not allow for a density of a quadplex, then a quadplex would not be allowed.
And along that, in that same vein, I read in your document that there is a percentage that, for example, at some level, the building can only be 50% of the land and others at 20 and 10. Can you explain that in more detail?
So that's currently in code. That's currently found in Article 306, and it's for lot coverage. Historically, that lot coverage has been for detached accessory structures. But when staff would review detached accessory structures, we would take into account primary residential, or residential structures. We're moving that section to 406. None of the language is changing. It's just intended to incorporate all lot coverage for specific zones.
The reason I'm asking, if there's already a limit to how big the, how much building can be on a certain piece of property, doesn't that control whether you could put a tri or a quad on it?
That would certainly limit structures that could exist on a specific property. That provision, as mentioned, covers garages. It covers sheds, shops, and of course, homes. So yes, it could act as a limitation. But that's not, I don't think that was the primary intent. I think the primary intent was just to have lot coverage overall.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else got questions?
Commissioner Lazarsky for staff. A number of the public commenters addressed school capacity. I realize it didn't come in time to make it in the staff report, but we did receive a public comment from the Washoe County School District. Could you summarize their position on capacity?
Certainly. So I've got it up before me. Basically, Washoe County School District did reply to us. We did meet with them multiple times. And basically, they have no concerns related to the code change. As of currently, currently, school enrollment is trending down. They have talked about potentially repurposing or decommissioning schools. That the school district does have the capital funding necessary to accommodate growth, so no school capacity concerns are apparent at this time. And then, school district does reserve its right to comment on development projects as they occur. And that was the gist of the summary we received.
Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? Chris, I got, I got a couple of questions. So this, this proposal is only going to, it's not going to affect LDS, like LDS one, one home per acre, where you're going for MDS and higher, right? Commercial, MDS is the three, and then right now, you can have like a duplex and then a triplex. You're going to have five homes on one acre of MDS currently. Am I correct on that?
That is correct.
So you're not changing any of that?
No.
So that's, that's all stay the same. The lot area is only going to affect higher-rated zones like, what'd you say, the urban, places like that, right?
I apologize, Mr. Chair. So you are correct that the vast majority of the proposals will not impact LDS. However, cottage court developments could impact the LDS.
Can you speak on that then, please?
Let me pull up. Kat, are you prepared to answer this? I'm going to hand it over to-
That's fine. Thank you.
Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning, for the record. So what's proposed is that cottage courts could be allowed in the low-density suburban zone with an administrative permit, so it would need to go to the Board of Adjustment. And again, it would need to meet the, the, it could not go above the maximum allowed density, which is low for LDS. The reason it's contemplated in that environment is that it's a, it's a style of housing that people overall seem more amenable to, and that there are cases perhaps where somebody had a very challenging sloped LDS parcel, unlike is common in the county, and it's just another option for them. But again, with that discretionary approval.
And how many homes can go on that?
So a cottage court can be two to 12 homes. And for example, in LDS, to do 12 homes, you would need 12 acres.
You would need to, so one home still per acre?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Obviously, not as bright as everybody else's in this thing. But I'm quite confused. And I would, I would like to have basically a workshop session to-
Commissioner Flick, please speak into your microphone.
I'm sorry. I would like to have a workshop session so we can go over, well, especially Section 302, but other sections within this thing. So we, so I feel comfortable with what I'm voting for. All right. I, this is a complex thing that you're doing, and I think you did a pretty damn good job. But I'm a little slow in being able to comprehend all of the impacts that it, that it will create. And so anyway, I would throw that out. I, I can't really vote for it now, but I don't want to vote no for it.
I happen to agree with him. I think we need to do more study on this. I think we need more study in, on this before we make a decision.
Through, through the chair, if I, if I may, we did have, we did schedule meetings with each of the planning commissioners, with the exception of Commissioner Flick. We didn't hear response back from you. If you would like, we can certainly have a one-on-one or, you know, we, you can certainly meet with staff, and we can answer all the questions as best that we can. But we were hoping to use that opportunity with each of the planning commissioners prior to this meeting to give the, each commissioner an opportunity to go through the proposals, go through the proposed ordinance, ask questions, and hopefully resolve any of those questions. Because I know there is an awful lot that is being proposed with this amendment.
Well, I apologize for not making that. My, my email has not been working really good. But anyway, be that as it may, I'm, I'm, I'm still not prepared to, to vote yes or no on it. And it's, that's just me. I mean, you folks can do what you want.
So how does that work legal? Can you please speak on that?
What's, what's the specific question? Are you-
He wants a workshop before he can vote yes on it, but he's afraid to vote no. He's not fully comfortable with, with this package and him understanding what it's all about at this present time.
Well, any, any workshop that involves a quorum of the board is a public meeting that is subject to the open meeting law. So as far as, you know, the board has multiple options. Of course, the board can take action on this today. The board can elect to have a special meeting at some point between now and the next planning commission. The board can move to continue this to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. Those are multiple options for you. But as far as any quote workshop with a quorum of the board, that is a public meeting.
Yeah, the rest of the commissioners don't, don't need a tutor.
Not necessarily tutor. You need to be comfortable with this. Can he abstain from voting on this?
I don't see any legal reason for an abstention. No. I mean, I can't think of any reason why, a legal reason why an abstention would be-
Okay.
Warranted.
Would it be appropriate for him to vote no on this because he doesn't understand it?
That would be up to Commissioner Flick.
So you're saying I can't abstain if I want to, or?
Cannot.
No, I can't. So I have to vote either yes or no.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you can't abstain. I'm saying I don't see a legal reason why you would abstain.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could, we don't have a motion before us, so discussing how we vote on a motion-
Right.
-is going to depend on what the motion proposed is.
Right. Kind of threw me all off track here. Okay, Chris, I got another question for you. So on 402 density, you mentioned that it's going to be part of the next package. But Spanish Springs is going to be left out on that. But that's going to go to the North Valleys and everybody else.
So I'm going to defer to Kat.
Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. So the contemplated housing package 2.5B would be looking at those density-related amendments in Article 402. But the previously contemplated amendments to the Spanish Springs area mod- amendments to the Spanish Springs area modifiers would not return as part of that package. So essentially, those new density rules, if, if, when they were contemplated and if they were adopted, would apply to all areas of the county where, based on, you know, zoning district and so forth. But those specific Spanish Springs modifiers, so that two-story height limit, that change is not going to come back. It will remain as it is currently in code.
Okay, and that's 35 feet, right? 35 feet is the current code.
So the, the, the code requirement in the Spanish Springs modifier that's remaining is a two-story height limit on commercial center use types. You're correct that most regulatory zones in Washoe County do have a, a height limit of 35 feet.
Okay. And just so everybody knows, 35 feet is about from the back of this wall to that sign that says no. So the second row back there, so it's not that high. All right. There was a question on the La Pasada Toll Road. That has nothing to do with this. Well, questions that, I don't think there's anything that we can talk about on that. More people in a small area could possibly influence a safety issue, but we, we don't know what, I think a lot of this has to do with what the developers do. Right now, this isn't opening the door for anybody to come in and just do anything that they want to do. There's still rules and regulations, and you've still got to have a developer come in and spend the money to do this. I think this is kind of opening a couple windows, a couple opportunities for a developer to come in and try different things, but not necessarily just take over the whole entire valley or the whole, or all of Washoe County at that point. This affects me also personally. I don't live in Spanish Springs, but it does affect where I live. And so this, this is a, this is a real tough decision. This, this really, really is. I think staff has done a great job of putting this together and explaining it the best that they can. It sounds like to me like it's some minor changes. It's just some cleaning up of a few things. I don't personally see a, a big issue with the way that it's written right now. I think it could possibly benefit the, the community. It's not going to fix all the problems, but that's not what they're trying to do. They're just trying to open the door for, for a little bit more people to come in and find some affordable homes, whatever that may be. We don't know exactly what that's going to mean. It does not mean we're going to be putting in apartment buildings or anything like that. That is not part of this plan. They have stated that upfront from the beginning. So with that said, the way that it's written right now, although I, I have to only find one of these findings, and I, and I can. I can find one, maybe two, maybe not all of them. But according to the law, you only have to find one. So I, with that said, I have to vote according to the law, and I can find at least one of these. So I have to vote for this. So, go ahead. Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or anything?
Commissioner Lazarewski, I would like to give a big thank you to staff and to our public for the, a lot of back-and-forth engagement on this. The point has been made, but I'll reiterate, this is a really big lift in terms of the complexity that appears. I think there's been a significant amount of public outreach, and I thank the public for showing up and really giving us the feedback. And I think that the staff has done a good job of cutting back at what was highlighted as inconsistent. I, I really thank everybody for showing up today and giving us the feedback. For those who don't drive Spanish Springs every day, we may not know how bad the roads have gotten. And, and I think that we can try to work with staff on, on what can be done there. Obviously, state highways are not, are purview, but we can look at what can be done in an issue or in, in any planning addressed specifically to that issue. With that said, I'd be prepared to make a motion unless anyone else would like to.
Okay, I will entertain a, a motion. And if everybody's good with it, Dan, then I'll, I'll let you go ahead and make the first motion. Nobody else seems to be raising their hands, so go ahead.
I move that after giving reason, consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate amendments to the Washoe County Development Code and recommend approval to the, to of WDC A24-004 to amend Washoe County Code, Chapter 110 Development Code within Articles 300, 302, 304, 306, 406, 408, 410, 412, 432, and 902, and add Article 313 as reflected within the proposed ordinance contained in Exhibit A1. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the resolution contained in Exhibit A on behalf of Washoe County Planning Commission and to direct staff to present a report of this commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation for approval is based on the ability to make at least one of the four findings set forth in Washoe County Code, Section 110.818.15E.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Nelson, I'll second.
We have a motion and a...
That Commissioner Lazarewski detail which findings he can make. And then we would need the second as well to indicate that.
I personally can make all four findings.
I can make finding one and three.
Okay, call for a vote, or do we need to do a roll call vote?
It's up to you.
We can do it. Let's, let's just go ahead and do a roll call vote.
So are we voting for this or against it?
We're voting for this. If you would like to, yes, do your, you can, whatever you feel comfortable doing.
I will.
We're voting for it. So we have a motion. He stated his findings. Kate has stated her second findings. Can we please call out the rest of the members and go from there?
Jim Barnes.
Yes, I vote yes.
What was your finding?
And I, I can make findings one and three.
Michael Flick.
I vote no. And I have trouble with, I have trouble with one, two, three, and
Lynda Kennedy.
I vote, I vote no, and I have trouble with one, two, three, and four.
Amy Owens.
I vote yes with one and three.
And Rob Pierce.
I have to vote yes because I can only, but the only finding I can find is number one. Even though it is just the general guideline, it, it does lay out that we need to do something. We need to look at something. And so that is why you're getting a yes vote. Other than that, I cannot find any findings.
Okay, I have five yes, two no.
The motion passes. All right. That moves us on to... Oh, what?
We are taking a roll call vote. Did everyone vote?
We already did it all.
Did everyone vote? Okay.
Everybody voted, right? Brandon, is that correct?
Yes, the motion was made by Dan Lazarewski who voted yes, and stated his findings. Commissioner Nelson seconded and stated her findings.
Okay.
And then went through the rest of the commissioners.
Yes. We already did it all. Thank you. Do you want to read the appeal procedure, Mr. Lloyd, in case these citizens would like to appeal this?
There is no appeal of an approval.
There's no appeal to it. Okay. I'm sorry.
If I may, this, this is a recommendation. This recommendation will go on to the Board of County Commissioners. And so if, if you have an opportunity to, please attend the county commission meeting when it's held. Thank you.
Yeah, go to the county commissioner meeting and state your, your comments. Maybe they can't find the findings. I don't know. I can't speak for them. But anyways, moving on, item number nine, chair and commission items, feature agenda items. Do we have anything from anybody?
I'd have a request for staff. If we can take some look at what we, within the realm of county planning staff can do for Spanish Springs congestion issues.
I would be North Valleys too, and I would recommend North Valleys also because the North Valleys is just as bad.
So would this be in the form of a workshop? What are you looking for in terms of the information you're seeking?
I'd say start with a brainstorming session by staff about whether we have any power or authority and just, it doesn't even have to be a agendized item, just an email follow-up. Let us know, and we can, we can see if there's follow-up and more that we can do there.
Okay, that's a request for information from staff, so that's 9B. Nobody had any feature agenda items, 9A. We'll move on to item number 10, director and legal counsel report from previous planning commissioner meetings.
Yeah, I do have a few items to report on. The grading code, that was the code amendment that was heard before this planning commission, went through the county commission, and it was heard on a second reading and adopted on August 20th. The short-term rentals development code amendment is scheduled to be heard for second reading at the September 17th County Commission meeting. The, the RPC alternative list is set to be heard by the county commission at the September 10th meeting, and the York MPA RZA is scheduled to be heard at the October 8th meeting. That's all that I have.
All right. Anything from legal?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
All right. We'll open up general public comment. Do we have any general public comment? From anybody on anything?
Anybody in chambers like to make general public comment? Looks like no general public comment in chambers, and no general public comment on Zoom.
Okay, so we have no, we'll close the general public. With that, it is 9:8:43. Our meeting adjourned.